All right, coming out of clothes, we're gonna come in to request for utility donation for the Warren Heritage Society Town Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the last time this came before council, council directed me to send a letter to the Warren Heritage Society to request them to seek funds through the county, Warren County. They have responded back with a copy of a letter from the county basically stating that the budget process, they did not add any outside organizations or agencies to the budgets, so therefore they would not approve the request for any type of funds this year for the Heritage Society.
Okay. And they're asking for about the same last year, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, they're asking for fifteen thousand again.
Counsel? It's a pleasure. Bill?
I still stand with the, I don't have a problem with seed money for start any organization. But there again, I'm very concerned about other organizations such as anybody that's a C three organization will be in here asking for taxpayer funds, and I think there is a better way to handle that through membership and fundraising. I'm really against this request.
Gary?
Well, I've got some reservations with it too, as far as what we're opening up, as far as everyone's coming in and wanting the rest to put in utility.
I voted for this last three years. I think I was favor voting for it for fourth year. This is not just a 501(c)(3) coming in with their handout for nothing. This is an organization that took on our own town archives, maintains them, makes them available to the public. They did, I think, expand hours that they were available to the public last year when we had them like this, so I'm in favor.
Jean?
Well, I'm a little like John, I voted for it last year. Matter of fact, I think I made the motion if I'm not mistaken, John's second. You know, we've been doing this now, I think, four, five years, I'm not sure exactly.
We started in twenty-fourth year.
And I've been down there numerous times. Matter of fact, I'm not a member, but I go to all the conferences. And I enjoy going down there and looking at what they do, and they do have three builders they have to maintain, the Ivy Logs, all the other two. I have no problem giving them the money this year. But again, next year, and I will say this upfront, I want you to be somebody down there, whoever the president is, to make sure you get your request to the county before they host their budget, so the county can maybe include you guys in their budget. Because this year, I told the women and the ladies to get with them, but I don't think it got with them enough to get them on the budget. And so I'm gonna say this this year, that make sure you get, if somebody gets a letter to the county request before they come up with a final in their budget.
Jay?
It's the same comment that I have with every organization that's asked us for money. The biggest thing for me is, I feel like there's no clear way of differentiating who we're approving funds for or not approving funds for. I really wish that we had, maybe my request would be that we have some sort of application process for funds when we, like, I'm just thinking, like, there's the trolleys recently for the Main Society, this is a not-for-profit, looking for utility, utility funding essentially. All these little things add up, and I feel like for us to be better organized, we should, you know, have funds set aside and application process and have some clear, some clear criteria on why we're approving, what we're approving. It would really be helpful. It'd be helpful for councils, once, you know, this year, three seats are gonna change over possibly, you know, it'd be helpful for the next council that's gonna come on to follow that criteria. So I'm not necessarily against it, I just always feel uncomfortable voting for it when we have no criteria for these kind of things.
Chris?
The biggest thing for me, I don't have a problem with it, it has the standing merit. I would like some more further justification for the email.
Bill?
I don't wanna sound like I'm against it, I'm just, I'm very concerned about the expenditure, and we've got a very tight budget again this year. And, you know, we could use the same argument that here we are, we've already approved a budget, and here we have a request now. If it requested us for next year, we'd look at it and put it in accordingly. But there again, we've already approved the budget. And you're taking another fifteen thousand dollars away from something in, already approved. So, you know, you gotta be aware of that.
Joe, move to our agenda. Counsel, either vote it up or down.
Okay.
All right, moving on to number three, Fifth Amendment to lease with Comcast. The town attorney?
Yes, Mr. Sun, the Assistant Town Attorney is in the process of negotiating a new franchise agreement with Comcast. It expired, I think, on the twelfth of May, and while the parties are negotiating an extension, both parties just wanna extend it on a month-to-month basis, and hopefully by June or thereabouts, they'll have a more permanent franchise agreement.
Are you dealing with Joshua on the Comcast? Is that who?
I'm not sure who he's dealing with, to be the truth.
Okay. Well, I know we had the new guy, Joshua, come in.
I know there's a new guy, I'm not sure.
Has everything gone more smoothly?
Yeah.
We're getting our request taken care of?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure who it is, I know it's a new person.
Bill? Any questions? Gary? John? Jean?
Yeah, I got one, going back to the last time that we did the franchise agreement, that we had a terrible time getting through the, keeping their office here in front of the way. And I wanna make sure that that's part of the new contract, because it's so vital for these citizens to have actual contact with people, not on telephone.
I think that'll pretty much remain there until... Jake?
So this might be a dumb question, but franchise agreement, is this just, is this similar to an exclusive agreement, just with Comcast or this service area?
I don't think so. I don't think it's legally exclusive, it may be from a practical standpoint exclusive. The county just entered into a franchise agreement with Comcast. They want, the Comcast wanted to get the counties first and then the town, because the county's a bigger service area.
So do you have to, this might be more of a question for you, do you have to select a particular service provider for your area and enter into a franchise agreement? Is that how this works?
No, actually, you know, another cable provider could move in this area, but, you know, with Comcast being here and established and already on our right of ways, already have assets along the roads, I doubt anybody will ever make a move to move into here. And with our agreements with Comcast, we get a franchising fee as well as all attachment fees, so it's a revenue switch for us as well.
What are they giving us for the government center, thirty thousand?
Right, there's money tied into that for improvements and upgrades to the recording equipment at the government center.
We get thirty, the county gets thirty.
So why do you, why does Comcast enter into a franchise agreement with the county?
I would buy town limits.
No, I mean, what's in it for them?
I'm assuming just a franchise fee as well, and maybe possibly utilization of their right of way, but then again, I don't know how much right of way they're really talking.
It's legal requirement.
Okay. There you go.
All right, I was just curious how the agreement, because in reading, I wasn't able to figure out how, how the agreement works that way.
Yeah, that's short answer.
Yes, sir, that's what we like. Chris?
I'm okay with the, from the agenda.
Anybody else? Joe? All right. M.J., could you come up here and let us know about the West Main Street Connector, Phase One?
West Main Connector.
Council can see you and the camera can catch you, and you're good.
Very good.
Thank you.
So last week, we opened up the bid for West Main Connector, Phase One. The lowest bid was from G.B. Holtz, in the amount of one million eighty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars fifty-eight cents. The town will receive six hundred and fifty thousand dollars Economic Development Access Program through V-DOT, which will require a budget amendment, staff working with the EDA to seek other funding possibilities. The remaining balance of Phase One could be funded through the New Market Tax Credit Program, or council may elect to use funds that have been carrying forward. Currently, we have four hundred and forty thousand dollars, six hundred, four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, thirty-nine, in funds that have been set aside for the West Main Connector. That would be my recommendation, is to use those funds, which would allow us not to incur the interest, or later have debt service on the project. We're looking for council to approve this on the next agenda if possible. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jean?
Well, let me add to something, I think I got it in my head. So we have a million ninety thousand, correct?
Yeah, we need a million fifty-four.
Million eighty.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is the week?
A million and eighty dollars.
Yeah, one million eighty-two thousand, yeah, one million ninety.
And that would cover the whole, the whole contract, correct?
Phase One, yes, sir.
Phase One, it takes us back to the IT Federal.
About a third of the way from I-percent.
Third of the, yeah, but this is all we need right now.
Yes, sir.
IT Federal.
Correct.
Now, we're gonna need the rest of the money in the future.
Yes, sir.
I will, I say, that's what the money was put in there for, and I say, take it out, and I don't wanna see as far anymore money.
Jake?
What were you expecting this to come out to?
I think the original quote was eight hundred thousand, if I remember correctly. So it's a little over that, two hundred thousand, so.
Joe, that's where I was confused, because talking with Jennifer, the V-DOT was based on one point two-five years back.
Yeah, I don't know. I know that the total price was one point two for the road and the lift station down to IT Federal, and we actually ended up over that due to the IT Federal site ran us almost five hundred, four sixty, four seventy. So, yeah, the overall cost for both items, both components, was supposed to be around one point two, so they're about two hundred.
We're pretty close, I mean, we do have the money, but go ahead, Jake, I was just wanting to clarify that a little bit.
The, when you say the town received the six hundred and fifty thousand Economic Development Access Program, is that like a grant, or is that a loan?
It's a grant, through the common law.
Okay, so six hundred and fifty thousand, it's covered through a grant. We have four hundred and forty thousand set aside.
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's technically a covered project, or?
That is correct.
Technically.
Yes, sir.
How else is it a project?
Yeah, then my recommendation is move forward with the funds set aside, and then second phase, we can seek the New Market Tax Credit.
Perfect, thank you. I understand now.
Chris?
Honestly, I'm just glad we're at this point.
John? Gary? Bill? Put it on the agenda.
I'm in favor of the, you know, we've talked about one point four million dollars. Council Conley has stated that several times. I've stated it several times. There's four hundred thousand set aside for that. There's also a four hundred thousand set aside for that police department, which is gonna be eaten up with interest as we go forward. So we gotta save that money, that four hundred, what is it, twenty-seven thousand, B.J.? I forget the exact.
For the, for the West Main Connector, it's four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-one thousand.
No, the PD.
Oh, PD?
PD. That's all right, B.J., it's four hundred and something.
Yeah, it's around four hundred, yes, sir.
But this four hundred thousand, I think, needs to go where it was placed.
Intended. Jean?
Again, going back to IT Federal now, where does this hundred and fifty thousand they're supposed to give us for?
We're working with the EDA on that to hopefully get that as part of the amendment when we bring this to council.
So that could possibly bring big our, our portion down.
Yes, sir.
Amount, we don't have to. Now, the second question is, out of the, our money that we have in reserve, this isn't included in through the actual reserve, this is money that's set aside specifically for the West Main Connector.
That is correct.
Listen, were those thirty went to over the years?
Just wanna make sure we don't start to keep drawing down off of our reserve.
I appreciate that.
Now, B.J., correct me if I'm wrong, but our one-third will continue going to the West Main Street even though we're getting this section done?
Until council directs us otherwise.
Okay, good, yeah. Anybody else? Joe? Put it on, Jennifer, please.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the question that you just answered, was how much is it, a third?
It's, it's a third of two cents, is what it's worded in the work.
Ken, can I include that in our motion for next Monday night, that that continues to be accrued into that fund?
No, it stays there.
It's already in the order.
So.
It's already there, I just wanna make sure. Part of the funds that we're talking about all along, that's over in the club, and that was under contention when we were talking about whether to increase taxes or not.
See, this.
Draw down reserve, this has nothing to do with our reserve.
No, I understand that, I'm not talking about reserves. You just said unless the council makes a change, it tells you not to keep it there.
Well, I'm sorry, I wasn't working.
I would like to have it included in this, in this next Monday night, that that money continues to be accrued forward to West Main Connector, whatever that amount would be, a percent or a third percent or whatever.
When we can circle the iterated.
The council can change it any time they want to.
Yeah, even if, if we had, John?
Was the, the third of two cents, was that something that was put in with a sunset date?
Yes, sir.
What is the sunset date on?
Once the project is paid for.
The entire?
Yes.
Was there, was there a number, like, in the motion? I'd be curious to know, like?
There was.
I made that motion, there was no number, it was just a sunset, once, once that Main Street Connector is done.
Once the debt is paid for.
And that can be interpreted to mean the entire project and its debt is paid?
That's what you mentioned.
Well, if that's got a sunset clause, then it can't be, the council can't reverse it, if that's the case.
No, until the total Main Street is put in, and we had talked about going the whole Main Street, and when I made my motion, I made it to stand clear that once that Main Street is paid, then those, that tax comes off.
Okay, so I went here, that's why I'm asking these questions, because I wanna make sure that the council, this council or the next council cannot take that money and put it on another project, I want to make sure it stays on that particular.
Absolutely. And it'll keep occurring every, every year?
Until the sunset clause.
Yep, until we find enough money to bury it out back somewhere. All right, thank you, B.J. All right. Let's get into some heavy stuff here, discussion of the current future capital projects. We talked about this a few months ago. Tonight, we're gonna really get deep into it, we have projects that we need to get done, we need to find the money, and we need to find out where we're gonna get it from. Is that clear for the council?
I thought it was a V.J. that's, Mr. V.J.
Well.
Sometimes.
Joe, would you like to start us out?
Yeah, actually, B.J. has got a bigger copy of the spreadsheet. That will really basically guide us through our discussions tonight on all the capital projects, it's seven-plus-year lookout, so.
What'd you say?
It's about seven-plus years, stretched out.
Now, these projects include what? One up, our B.J.
Yes, sir.
Guide us along a little bit, if you don't mind.
So the, what you're seeing there is the, the top of the spreadsheet shows the general fund items, Leech Run Parkway, that we pay to Warren County, could be possibly refinanced through the New Market Tax Credit, repayment for Town Hall, Leech Run Parkway, that we paid to the EDA, that was for the purchase of the land.
B.J., the Leech Run Parkway, wasn't that one of the projects that was discussed for the actual New Market Tax Credit or not?
Yes, it is, and we would refinance it through the New Market Tax Credit.
Okay.
Right now, we're getting debt service to the EDA and to Warren County.
Okay.
For the construction, one for the, for the purchase of the land.
Okay.
That's why you see two of them on there.
Thank you.
Then, Happy Creek, Technology Park, as you see, that'll be ending in fiscal year twenty-one. Success Industrial Park, Stevens Industrial Park, Ball Drive, all of those will be ending in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And then down to the New Market Tax Credit, estimated interest only, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We'll pay that for seven years. Obviously, it won't be the full amount until the projects are completed, but that's the best estimate that I have right now.
Projects include what?
Which include the, the Police Department Happy Creek Phase Two, extension of West Main, West Main Sidewalk extensions, and then the refinancing of Leech Run Parkway, which, if you look in the, in council's packet there, for the agenda items, I listed out the projects separately, along with the, how much interest each project is expected to accrue based on best estimates that are available right now.
B.J., hold that thought there just one second. Is there any council member that, that needs to ask a question at this point? Are you all on board with all these projects, where they're located, how they're, everybody good? B.J., continue, please.
So, anyway, so we'll pay three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars approximately for seven years. I say approximately because it does, we have to pay it once the project's been completed moving forward, so that's, could be give or, give or take there. Then, as you see, beginning fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, which would be, could be calendar year twenty-twenty-five, that is, New Market Tax Credit debt service payment is estimated between seven hundred and fifty thousand and one point two million, will be beginning in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. And then I've listed out the amounts of the projects total there, up in the general fund, but again, in council's agenda packet, I've listed the projects along with what the annual payment, one of thirty years, I know it would be, along with the one point five percent interest on. So, what my recommendation was, is we would take the funding for the debt services being paid to the EDA, and also the repayment of the loan for the Town Hall building, and move those over once the time comes to the additional debt service for those projects. And then my recommendation would be to increase the real estate taxes from March twenty-nineteen for one cent to be allocated to the projects, and then a half cent beginning in twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four, which will leave us with roughly one point two million dollars to help cover the debt service. It could be over or under that amount, but any additional funds could then be applied to the principal balance to lower our debt service.
And we're speaking of the additional tax that we're collecting now, like?
Yes, that's an addition.
That's going towards these other projects?
Correct, that's reallocating the funds, I've kinda broken it down in the, in council's packet there for deeper review.
So one cent plus four years of a half cent, so three cent over the period of five years?
Yes, sir, roughly. I mean, obviously, we'd have to reevaluate based on assessments, but that's just given the current situation.
I guess he's moving the funds to where we're paying now, they're gonna get paid off, so that'll move over.
I'm not surprised.
Sure, yeah, I mean, we.
I knew that was coming. He's at the police station.
Stat, especially B.J. has been working diligently on this to, to bring us where we need to be, and to see which way we're gonna be going and where we need to go.
The, the estimated interest only stops at twenty-twenty-five.
It could go.
Where does the debt service go from there? Is that, is that where it's itemized, at eleven million underneath?
Yes, yes, that's correct, that's the itemization, and it goes to the, between seven hundred and fifty thousand and one point two million.
So your, the recommendation with the cent and the four years, a half cent, is that just gonna continue covering the interest only, or is that gonna start paying principal?
Well, for the first seven years, we would have some, hopefully being set aside, that we could pay, pay down the principal. When we go to refinance it, or obtain our debt service, we can put them out to our principal to lower that balance that we have to get loaned for, the, rather than seeing an increase on the funds.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm more concerned about, is, how many are there that are just interest only right now, just the New Market Tax Credit?
The, the interest only are the Leech Run Parkway, West Main Sidewalk, extension of West Main, Happy Creek Phase Two.
All the itemized ones?
Yes, those will all be interest only.
But that's made up in the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar payment?
Annual payment.
Yes, that's what the interest is during the interest only period.
So, I, I feel like we should be looking at this more aggressively. Yeah, I feel like we should be taking in the whole picture with the principal and making plans along that, that.
Well, that's why I started putting this spreadsheet together, B.J. has expanded it significantly. You know, my whole argument before, I wanted a half a cent or a one cent increase so we could start paying this debt down, and we could possibly do that in a spreadsheet. You know, I'm very concerned, we're gonna get to that point where that principal is gonna be, be ours, and then the man that's in this table, when he comes budget time, he's not gonna have the money in general funds to cover.
Well, I think the reason why I'm saying that is because it's, like, if you think about it from a personal, personal finance aspect, if you're buying your cars, your house, and you're paying interest only, it's an inflated idea of how much money you actually have, because you really don't have the money to cover all those things, but you're paying interest only, so it feels like you have more money than you actually do. And I'm, my concern is that, again, I think along the lines of if we're not here a couple years from now, the next council that comes on, if we're all in interest only mode, then it's gonna feel like there's more, more money to, or a greater, more money to tackle more projects, when in fact, there isn't.
The costs could be added, as we've done in the past, just like with the other projects, to allocate that, any additional funds to those projects.
Moving the topic. Jean?
B.J., we're coming down to what we're having now, as far as the amount of money that we're accruing each year, how much is that with the amount of money that we set aside in taxes so far? How much are we accruing at this point?
Well, fiscal year nineteen has five hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars set aside for those projects.
Now, is that gonna be a continuous five hundred and twenty-five thousand?
The continuous, the continuance that we have are, you know, are the two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the Police Department, seventy-five thousand dollars for West Main, and seventy-five thousand for Leech Run Parkway.
Unless, unless we change something as far as our tax rates now, then that money will still be coming in and accruing each year, right?
That's, for those three that I just listed.
So in order to pick up the difference from what you've given us, next year would be a penny, and then a half a cent there.
Yes, sir.
That would float us.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's interest only, but see, interest only, right, B.J.?
Well, the, the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars is interest only, where, like, for instance, we have two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars with five hundred going to the Police Department right now, that's dedicated to the Police Department, I can't pay interest for Happy Creek Houses Two with that money, so we have.
When you said five hundred and fifty thousand, it was a lump sum, I was putting it all together, that we, when we do the tax credits, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, we still have a hundred and, closer to two hundred thousand in the year.
There would be some left over, yes, sir.
And so, if we add that penny next year, then we're gonna get another hundred thousand plus in that, so, so we are having a little bit of cushion, but not much.
That's correct.
The biggest problem that I have next year is we gotta realize to sit here at this table, cancel that. If, if, if big projects come up, right, the departments, such as the Department of the Police Department, such as the radios and all that, are we gonna have to either bite the bullet on someone along the line, or we're gonna have to keep our budget right now really flat? Because I can't see, can't see the town council next year voting for two or three cent in order to cover additional costs, plus the penny that you want to cover the cost of the tax credits. And so, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is this, no big projects is gonna, I'm gonna consider even approving until we have money set aside, or we have money in hand to do them. Because if we do, and we're saying, even with a flat budget, we're still gonna talk about a penny, and maybe even a penny and a half. And so, if we add any other projects, I think we're gonna have to add more money to either have a two or three cent raise instead of the one. So I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that, because we can't, next year, we just can't add any more money than what we have this year, because we just don't have the fund to do it.
And I think that, that loop's gonna start July the first, when y'all start your budget again next year.
Something.
But, and Jean, I totally understand.
And that includes employees and the whole nine yards.
Well, if, when you're working a budget, it definitely.
Well, you wanna say it, because, like I said, I mean, I know Jake's in there, but I just wanna make sure that we're not overloading our pockets with projects that we can't afford, and that's what we've done already. And I think. And I think we need to put a hold on a lot of these things if we want until we get the actual funding, as Bill says, like, we know exactly what we can cover and what we can't cover. Because I'm not willing to add any more expense to our budget at this point until I know where we're at on this.
Okay, that's next, next budget and Joe, keep that in mind.
We need to start today.
Joe, keep that in mind, he's doing this.
That's a year too late.
Well, that budget starts next year, we already got this one approved, but Jake, you got a question?
Yeah, so, thanks for showing me that paper BJ, I ended up pulling it up.
Very good.
So, but now that I'm seeing that, you have conservative estimates on two point six five, three point six five, four point six five in rates, assuming that thirty percent of the projects were given from the New Market Tax Credit, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so if we take a conservative rate of a thirty-year loan, thirty percent of the project forgiven, and let's take middle of the road, three point six five, that's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an annual debt service for those projects. We can't pay for that today.
That's correct.
So, and we can't pay for three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in interest only payments today without raising the taxes, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, that, that goes to my point of, if we take all those projects with the full debt service, and that's assuming that we get thirty percent knocked off through the New Market Tax Credit, I like how you put the full debt service, thank you for doing that. The thirty years would be one point two million if that doesn't happen on an annual basis. So, that's a, that's a significant bump in our, in our general fund budget, and I feel like we should have some sort of handle around how to tackle the full debt service, at least a plan on that, because I think that raising the taxes, the three cents, I think is just gonna get us into the, the range of being able to, to cover the interest only on the debt service.
The, well, over, over the period of time with the, with the other debts coming, they're being paid off, we will get up there, but it's gonna, it'll be over time, it won't be.
Like the industrial park?
Yes, sir.
Coming off?
Yes, sir. And the repayment of Town Hall here. So, once those drop off, we can certainly reallocate those over, but.
What's the money for the repayment of the Town Hall coming?
It comes out of the general fund and it's a, it's a money.
When do you propose that?
That's ending in twenty twenty-two.
Because we talked about that being this year.
And we certainly can, and that is an option. We'd have to take the money out of general fund balance to transfer to the electric fund.
Oh, no, that's fine, no, we're here to, to lay all the, the bad on the table and, and council's gonna change come election, and we'll have to have this discussion again next year when it comes down to the budget and tax, set tax rates and.
I, I mean, I just feel like we should be coming closer, I feel like we should be incorporating some sort of principle in this and trying to get closer to settling that debt service and whatever it's gonna be, I would feel more comfortable with that. Not because I feel like going the interest only is necessarily a bad route, I just feel like we have, we would have more of an appetite to keep adding projects in there, when in reality, we can't cover that group. It, it hurts, I feel like, to raise taxes just to cover interest only.
Right.
I don't feel like that's.
That's waste of money.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
I mean, it's good interest, don't get me wrong, and it's a good program, I'm not, I'm not criticizing it, I'm just saying like, oh, I'm not gonna believe it.
If that interest only plan is predicated on the New Market Credit, and hopefully we'll get three million dollars back. You know, when you buy a house, the best way to buy a house is to make your monthly mortgage payment and add some more.
Right.
So you don't have a thirty-year loan. That's how I paid my house down.
Actually, thinking back to ten, the only time we raised taxes was for these projects to come, I don't think we ever really had any tax increases to cover. Gene, I don't, I think, I mean, it's basically been capital improvement, I mean, it's, we put a million and a half down there at the Electric Department, and we are in good shape in our general fund, because we are, Gene, gonna have to be looking at that radio system, that's not.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're gonna be looking at that, but that's, you know, next.
I know it'll be next year, but we need to look a year or two in advance, right?
Well, that's why I was saying, these taxes have been raised over the course of time, even back when Shay Parker and Brett, everybody in the council. Joe?
BJ, let me just clarify for myself, if you will, I feel like this was already asked, but I'm still not getting it, so the five seventy-two, one twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
That's annual allocated toward specific projects, but some of it's here, some of it's there, some of it's going toward the Police Department, some of it's going toward.
That's what we have allocated as, as of fiscal year nineteen. The, what is allocated by ordinance is these two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred to the Police Department, seventy-five thousand dollars for West Main, and then seventy-five thousand dollars for Leatron Parkway.
Okay.
Fiscal year nineteen includes additional debt service there for Leatron Parkway that could be allocated toward these projects as well.
Okay. But then what's the one forty-eight seven coming from? It just says, it says, will Leatron Parkway refinance?
The, well, it's the, we have two Leatron Parkways on there, one of the, the land and engineering, the other one's the actual construction.
Okay.
And one of those we're paying to Warren County, one of those we're paying to the EDA. So, they are, right now, they are at the finance, but they could be refinanced through the New Market Tax Credit.
Okay, I understand.
Jake, oh, sorry.
No, it's, it's okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna say something that might, might, yeah, we're gonna flip out in the chairs here. So, how many cents do we have allocated for the repayment of Leatron Parkway, or repayment of Town Hall Building and the Leatron Parkway, basically the, all the loans that are set to expire by twenty twenty-two?
The, there's no taxes that have been directly allocated toward it, I mean, it's general fund, we know that we have to pay them, so they're included in there, but they're, it's not directly allocated by ordinance.
So, basically, we're allocating, allocating in our general fund, the debt service is there?
As it goes.
Yes, sir, okay. Why don't we take a million dollars out of our general fund and just pay all that off?
Yes, that's what I was gonna suggest is.
And allocate the debt service.
Yeah.
We certainly can for the, for the Electric Department, the, the ones that we're paying to the EDA may be a little bit, I'll have to get with Jennifer to see about that, because Warren County pays a portion of that.
Wait, which Electric Department? So I'm talking about the Town Hall, Leatron, Happy Creek, industrial park, all the way down to the ball drive extension.
Town Hall is, is funded by the Electric Department, we took a lot of it out from the Electric Department, so we can pay.
Like, why don't, why don't, so, I don't know.
Basically, fast forward to twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Today.
And that is certainly an option. Like I said, the, I'd have to get with the EDA and see.
Yeah, I think we probably have a little difficulty with the EDA, because we are on that, that share.
Yeah, fair funding.
We can't buy ourselves out of this.
We can actually maybe take some of that money, I don't know, how do you think about this BJ? We could set some of that money aside so that when our share comes available or comes due.
Yeah, simply, simply encumber the amount that remains, so that it's revenue neutral. And, I mean, you, you're absolutely right, this is what I was gonna suggest to Bill, take this from the one point four that we've been talking about. Now, if my math is right, that puts us around like two ninety or so per year that we're winning and creating.
Yeah.
It's about two ninety, just under three, but that's between now and twenty, yes, between now and twenty nineteen, it puts you a lot closer.
If you do that, you have, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars that we're normally paying on debt service, plus we follow your plan, which brings us up to another three hundred and seven thousand dollars, which just puts us closer to the full debt service of, if you did the thirty-year, two point six five rate, which says seven, seven forty-five, so it puts us closer to that ballpark of tackling the full debt service.
Well, I'm not willing to even consider taking out the general fund, but in two thousand and twenty-two, you're gonna have, you could get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in advancement when these projects are, are, are believed to pay off, including the Police, or the Town Hall. So you're not gaining anything, you're just doing it, you're not, well, really not, it's not costing a nickel of the hundred and fifty thousand, because we're not charging interest on anything, it comes directly from the Electric Department, so we're not gaining anything. I'm not willing to take a million dollars out, only leave us four hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
What do we make interest on our million dollars? Two point five, so that would be.
As far as investments?
Yeah.
Because.
So we gotta think about that too, is if we take that million out, then we're not gonna make no interest, because we're not charging interest from the Electric Department, so it's not gonna really get us anywhere.
Well, I think we said, I think we said the Electric, so I didn't know that was paid for by the Electric Department.
Yeah, sorry.
But I think we were saying is that after, you could still put money aside for that, after that, after that loan is done.
Or we could take the interest that we make off the million and set it aside and let that million float until twenty twenty-three.
If you take the figures here, if you add them all up on each one of those, you'll have, when all of these, all these projects are paid off, which three of them's the industrial, I have the EDA, which is, that we've been paying on, and the other is the Electric Department, the four, and that gives you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, money that after two twenty-two, that can be directly applied to wherever we apply it to. So I don't wanna see us pull down our, our general fund to a point where we're only at four hundred thousand. We just pulled four hundred thousand dollars out of here, that we just do the bridge. I mean, come on now, think about this. How do you, what do you do with your own money? Do you pull your, all your savings out to buy a car? Mostly people, they don't do that.
Well, if I had, if I had a million dollars and I needed to take some money to buy a twenty thousand dollar car, I'd take mine and my savings by the car.
No, you're saying, taking, you're taking a million dollars out and you only got a hundred million and four hundred thousand to start with, only leaves you four hundred thousand dollars for any other projects, coming up for five years till two thousand and twenty-two.
Is that correct BJ, or do you need time to?
Well, it is correct.
Well, BJ's our finance guy, I don't need to be fair to the council members.
It, yes, I mean, it does sound correct.
Okay. What part sounds correct?
To be clear, the one point four million we're talking about is not in our fund reserve, and it's not already allocated.
Eight hundred's already allocated out, or nine hundred thousand's already allocated out, so you only got two hundred thousand that you're even considering. You just, we just passed, or we're going to pass Monday, four hundred and nine thousand dollars that we're gonna approve for Main Street Extended.
That money's already, that money's already part of the.
That's part of that one point four though. That's part of that one point four you keep talking about.
No, it's, it's, it's above and beyond the one point four.
Okay, I didn't understand.
But if you take a million out of the one point four, it leaves you four hundred thousand dollars in case of emergencies, and that's not practical, guys.
BJ, what's our emergency fund? What size is that?
One point five.
That's a minimum, what, like six months of operating or three months of operating? Because I know that's more than the one point four we're talking about.
And guys, tonight, we're not making decisions, we're just throwing this out here so that everybody knows what we're gonna be talking about, we'll get more information if needed.
Well, let's get more, more information on what, what I just said, so we're on the same page.
Yeah, we're, we're kinda hashing down.
If I had to choose, if it was neutral, I'd rather not be allocating interest off the stock market, interest off of an investment, because that could go away at some point much more easily than tax revenues going to go away. So you can, what I'd rather do is free up this, what you're saying, and then simply pass an ordinance or allocate some portion of the, the tax base that's coming in to say, this is going toward the New Market Tax Credit financing, and then build upon it later.
Joe, I know we're just discussing it tonight, but we won't be taking any concrete action until March?
Yeah, I wouldn't do.
Yeah, probably after, after the first of the year, once we do.
Yeah, we're just trying to set this up for the next budget, that when the next budget cycle hits.
Yeah.
Well, we have to make a decision on everyone's mind. Everybody's mind where these monies are and where they're coming from, because right now, I'm looking around this table, and there's still some confusion. I, you know, I'm a very simple type guy. I wanna know, what is the actual reserve, as John said? Because I thought the one point four, I thought the one point four, where we just pulled out four hundred thousand, as I said, but now you're saying that's not there, that's not. See, that's where, that's where the confusion comes here, we're not clear on where these dollars are.
But we did pull four hundred thousand dollars out of it for the bridge.
Yes, for the bridge, we did.
So that is already been pulled back.
So now you're down to, what, eight hundred thousand?
But the four hundred, the four hundred thousand dollars that you're talking about is, is in another fund, it's not in the general fund.
Hold your conversation just for a second. Joe, how are you?
Well, BJ, let BJ interject on the.
Yes.
The, we, yes, the three-month reserve, we have three point five million for three-month reserve, that's our three-month reserve that we have above and beyond that. As of June thirty of two thousand seventeen, we have one point five million dollars.
Above our three-month reserve.
Above the three-month reserve.
And not encumbered toward any other projects.
Correct, not encumbered to any other projects.
Right.
That's, that's.
So it's extra.
So this, this is the argument we're having every time, about that much.
That's true, that's what we gotta understand.
We're just allocating four hundred thousand.
That's correct, I was, I was getting ready to say.
So that's a, we got a million dollars then.
We have roughly one point one million.
Which is what?
Which is what I come back to, that's why I said, a million dollars is not counted as a project that does not tap an earthquake reserve.
And that does go care of my head and it's about raising the taxes.
Everybody can't talk at one time, please. One person at a time.
Sorry.
BJ's having a hard time here.
It's an Italian family.
Yeah, but he doesn't like spaghetti.
So, yes, we have, roughly right now, we have one point one million, one million, one point one million in fund reserve above, above and beyond our reserves now.
Question was, take that one million, put it to the project, is that what you were?
Well, I mean, I didn't, again, I didn't realize the Electric Fund arrangement, but in theory, I was saying, yes.
But that million dollars is making interest.
Yeah, it could, yes.
If we take it out, if it takes it out, it's not gonna make any interest.
But we're raising taxes, but we're raising taxes, and that, that's the, that's the dilemma. We're, we're building a kitty and getting interest on it, and then turn around raising taxes.
You lost me there.
You're building up some, you're building up money past our three-month reserve that we're just keeping and earning interest on, and then turning around to our citizens and saying, we don't have enough money for these projects, so we're gonna raise taxes on you.
But if you take a million out, if you take the million out, you're gonna need more money for taxes, because you're not gonna have that interest helping pay taxes.
No, it will, it will free up, it will free up taxes, so let's say it's two point five is what we're making on the investment of a million. We take the million, we pay down the debt service that we have there, we're getting about two point nine off of that, and that two point nine is not coming off the investment, which could show.
Keep that, keep that in your mind to figure out if that's what the case is gonna be, BJ.
Where's those six hundred piles coming for the Town Hall, it's going back to the Electric Department, where's that coming out?
One point one million.
I thought we already had that in the budget.
It is in the budget, every year.
Yeah, it's in there every year.
Just keep saying, you keep pulling out of it.
Well, we gotta, Bill, we gonna have more discussions, because there's no way we could even decide which.
If my figures are wrong, and like I said, I, I come up with about one point three million is what we got outstanding, that would pay off all the way up to two thousand and...
Twenty-three.
And like I say, the, the ones that we're sharing in Warren County for the EDA may be a twenty-two difficult to, to get a payoff one, but we can allocate them.
Well, you're, you're saying this, Hall said it's not coming up till next year, but I would like to move if that, if we decide to make a decision on this, one, I'd like to continue to talk about it, if we decide to make a decision.
Well, we are gonna continue.
Right, but I would.
Right now, I'm getting ready to, to close this meeting tonight, because BJ is picking up a whole lot of information from you guys.
No, that's fine, but what I'm saying is, I wanna vote on moving that money before this council turns over.
Well, that's the end of the year.
Right, I wanna vote on moving that money before the end of the year, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's why I keep bringing that six hundred thousand for the Town Hall, it's going back to the general fund, it's already in our budget, that comes directly out.
It's in our budget, but it's not in our account.
We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our budget for fiscal year nineteen to pay for, but any additional funds moving forward would have to be taken out of fund balance.
All right, we're going to close this out for tonight. If any council members still have questions, please let BJ, Joe, I guess we'll just let BJ take care of any questions.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is it's going to come back? Is he going to run the numbers?
Yes, we're going to be back in about a month. Okay? Because there's, there's a lot of, you know, questions that, and statements that council has made that may not be true, or maybe not the best option, or what do you catch on it, Joe?
Oh, yeah, what we'll do is, is we'll bring it back in a month, BJ can work on some more numbers, work on that concept of paying down that debt service now. He can at least try to get a projection of what that picture would look like if we went down that avenue. And anything else, if anybody else has any ideas or suggestions between now and when we meet, they can contact me or BJ.
Whether negative or positive, like Gene, you know, he does it.
I'm just curious, if BJ comes back and says, that is a horrible idea, and here's why, I'm all ears.
Right, yeah, that's what we want to give it, but we don't want to pile too much on it at one time, because we have months to talk about this, so we can do it every month just for ritual, just until we nail it down, because we're talking a lot of tax increases, and you've got to be mindful of it, citizens are paying that tax.
Well, we won't be voting on the tax increase till next year.
Till next year. No, can't do that till next year. All right, thank you, BJ, for all your hard work. I guess you got all the votes you needed to take. If you needed any information from any of the council members, please feel free to call them. All right, now, we're moving on to, are you leaving, Gary? I just had to say that. I just had to say that. Council discussion, goals. We have time to talk about it. Anybody want to talk about anything?
The main topic in my list is always there, pedestrian safety and the crosswalks. We'll be coming to ask for money soon. Channor Avenue will be first, and then we're going to talk about South Street. We have some real issues, gentlemen, and you know my stand on that.
Gene?
I just was going to ask Joe, have we done anything, considered painting the curbs?
We're looking at it.
Getting worse that time I see.
Yeah, I know.
A lot of you don't even know they've been painted.
Put your glasses on, they look bad.
Yeah, we're.
I don't want to.
Mr. Dewell, we're looking at the solutions. I'm trying to see about what economics of getting somebody to come in here and do it instead of us trying to use our staff to paint them curbs.
Can you get some part-time people for the summer?
Well, that's what I got to do. I got to look to see what I can handle in my budget and how we're going to tackle it.
That's what we used to do it all the time.
Well, like I said, I have to look at my budget first.
Doug, are you kind of getting a little ahead of the game for next month for our derelict in the buildings, and you'll be able to start us out from Apple to Omega and at ABC, what we need to do and how we need to do it? Jake?
How do we do with all the heavy rains, sewers and everything else like that? Everything go well?
I mean, we had our normal spots of overflow. We did have to bypass it to plant, which we normally have to do in a big rain event like that. Besides that, we dealt with numerous issues of storm drain clogs. I think what hindered us the most was the storm that happened about a week prior to that with all the winds. That blew a lot of debris down and about, so we noticed right away, once the rain started moving in, a lot of the drains were clogged, so Water and Sewer Group was pretty busy during that week last week, addressing all the issues.
It seemed like, I mean, just going around town and everything, I don't know if complaints, obviously, but it seemed like everything went really well, so.
Considering the amount of rain we had, yes.
Gene?
Joe, I, you know, I've been out and picked my grasses up out to New School about every day. And down along Happy Creek Road, the right side shoulder, grass has built up some mud that water cannot get in the ditch line. Can you send crews down there to open up those areas where they're low, so the water, especially down there just before you get to Linden Street? There's always a pond there, and the road is starting to deteriorate very badly because the water hangs there, because it can't get over the ditch line, because the grass is this high and above the roadway. And there's two or three other spots down through there as well.
All right, I'll have staff.
One at the Colored Cemetery.
Okay.